Welcome everyone to the Monday, June 5th, 2017 Medfield Public Schools School Committee Meeting. We were in executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with AFL-CIO, Council Number Nine, Local Number 3901, Custodian, the Maintenance Group, the Cafeteria Group, and the Secretarial Group. On the agenda tonight, we have public input to begin, then we have the approval of minutes from May 15th, 2017. For new business, we have the recognition of our retirees, the 2017-2018 athletic fee discussion and a vote, the 2017-2018 school choice vote, and the request for the 2017-2018 calendar change for professional development, as well as the AFL-CIO Secretarial Group contract vote. For old business, we have donations, we have the superintendent's report to the committee, and for future agenda items, we have student activity policy update and the fiscal year 17 budget closeout. So, to begin, is there anyone that has anything for the public input? Yeah? Oh, I think you're back there this way. Yeah, way back.
Hi, Jerry Potts, Curve Street. Two things, first of all, congratulations on making it through a year. The recognition night was amazing to see all the talent and between the administration, the school committee, the teachers, it was an amazing year. So, programs like RISE, the Strategic Plan, there's a lot to be thankful for, so congratulations, kudos, and we almost made it. There's only two more weeks as a parent of a 15-year-old. As Dr. Marsden said last time, we have a lot of great things. There are a couple of things that I just wanted to raise as issues for discussion, not now, but hopefully into the future. And the first one, we finished the budget, and I think one of the most eloquent speeches I've heard on public education funding came from Chris Morrison a couple of months ago, and I really appreciated that someone came out swinging to defend public education. I think that's really important. We're coming up on a contract negotiation with the teachers, and one of the things that I tried to do was to understand more on the last contract, and I actually went to the Mass Department of Education, and we haven't filed our contract with the state.
We did, they just haven't posted it yet.
Okay.
We filed it on time.
Okay. They actually said they don't have it, so I don't know if that's, but they had confirmed that they don't. And mostly the reason that I wanted to take a look at that is I know one of the most contentious issues from, you know, the budgeting process was the concern about the market correction and kind of getting caught up with the teachers. And that came out as something that, again, I think the school committee and the superintendent argued very forcefully to support, and I still think, and I personally have concerns about our teachers, you know, ensuring that they're paid appropriately, and was just trying to understand more about the contract and that negotiation. That sort of leads into the second, which is related around superintendent and principal discussions, and I know Chris came under some flak for asking for publicly for some of that information, but it does get a little bit into the transparency, and the assumption with transparency is that somehow there's going to be an attack, and it's actually the opposite. I think if you're advocating for the schools and for the teachers, it helps to have the information. And I know two months ago, when Dr. Marsden went in front of the Warren Committee, and there was an inquisition, I won't call it a Spanish inquisition, but there was certainly a lot of questions that I think he did a really good job of trying to articulate. One of the concerns I tried to voice, and I think it was taken as an attack, and it was just the opposite, was if we have to go to the market to hire teachers or principals or superintendents and pay market rate, I think Medfield has sort of been under this delusion that we can just underpay in these critical positions and we're going to get great talent. And it has worked, and we have great schools, but I would just say that one of the things related to transparency is just when that information's available. So, for example, the DOE will have our contract, but a lot of districts will post the teacher contract, and I think that's healthy. The discussion that took place at the candidate forum, and I know we have two of the three candidates on the school committee who were part of that discussion when transparency came up, it, there was a, I think, a perceived attack on the superintendent compensation, and I think actually what folks were hoping was that there, on topics like that, that there would be public information around benchmarks, and, you know, here's what other districts have, so that the community can learn more about what it actually costs to run a school. And again, I think Chris did a great job of raising this as part of the, you know, the defense of the contract, but I think the more public information about what's happening in education right now is going to help us as supporters of the schools, give us good ammunition to be able to come out and advocate for you guys. The final thing actually goes back to the November vote, and it actually ties into advocacy. I'm watching what's going on in Washington right now with attacks on public education and discussion on whether or not public education is the way to teach our kids, and I got to tell you, I hope that the school committee will consider being not an advocate just when the budget process comes, but when there are discussions about things that impact public education funding, like the charter schools, that again, whatever the personal beliefs are of folks on school choice or not, and I know we have some members of the school committee who exercise that choice by having their kids going to public, to private school, and that is totally their choice, but I'm hoping that the discussions that happen in advocating for funding for public education, as Chris so eloquently did, isn't just when the budget process comes up, because I have a feeling we're coming under siege with public education over the next six, 12. I don't know why, it's subtle, I don't know if any of you might have gotten the same rumblings, but I'm hoping that the school committee, one of its main roles is advocating for funding for public education, and I truly hope that the next time a vote comes or there's a discussion around this, then instead of saying, "Hey, it's not our thing," when it comes to funding for public education, I think every voice that can eloquently and aggressively fund for the power of public education, I hope they'll do that. And so, most importantly, I know sometimes these come across as criticisms, "You guys do an amazing job, you volunteer your time, thank you for what you do for the schools." I hope some of these things, you know, will just be taken under consideration. Thanks.
Sure.
So, I just had a specific question about the science curriculum. Oh, move down, because I'm not so tall. Okay.
And you have to identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Bonnie Marsette. Um, that's it. No ID. Okay. Great. So, I'm just trying to get more information about the K-5 science program. I have been reading all of the school committee notes online, I try to attend as many meetings as I can, and I know in the budget in January and then the revised budget in March, it's mentioned expanding the K-5 science program. I know that we were piloting, I'm not sure if that's correct, the FASS program, science program, this year in the elementary classrooms. So, what I'm wondering is, were the teachers surveyed post-piloting the program, and/or have we made a decision as to what we're going to buy and what is the cost around that program?
Would you like me to answer? Sure. Okay.
So, yeah, teachers had meetings throughout, there were 13 teachers that piloted this year. They met with Kim Cave and had a wrap-up meeting, probably about two or three weeks ago, and were very excited about the program, wanted to expand it. So, the teachers that did, those 13 teachers, will do another kit next year, and then we've expanded it to the entire K-5. So, teachers will have one kit going into next year, and other teachers will have two kits going into next year.
Okay, so we have, have we committed to buying the new program or just one kit from the program for next year?
So, we're doing a kit, a couple of kits at a time, yes.
And what's-
So, we're committed to the whole program, but we can't, we can't buy the entire thing at once.
Okay, so in the budget, when it says expanding the K-5, is that what's being budgeted? And what's the cost for that?
I think it was 42, 45,000, right around there.
Okay, so they just met, because my child is currently, well, I shouldn't say they're piloting, his classroom is piloting it, and they haven't even finished doing it, they just started it, so that's why I was just curious about how it was already decided to be purchased.
You know, I wasn't at the meeting, I just, I know that the teachers responded to me saying that they really enjoyed it. Kim Cave loved the meeting and said that it was very, very positive, and the teachers wanted to expand it. The principals feel the same way.
Okay.
What teacher is that, Bonnie?
You want to know a teacher's name?
Yeah, what teacher, I could look it up on Aspen, I'm just curious right now.
Oh, um-
What classroom?
Second grade.
Second grade?
Yeah, you can just go on her website.
Sure.
She updates constantly.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so, first item on the agenda, or the approval of the minutes from May 15th.
I do have an amendment to those minutes. And Francine, I'll email this to you as well. So, I have two, one thing that I'd like to replace and then one addition. Under the discussion for world language, the original statement is, Ms. Riley questioned the expectations of special needs students and what accommodations would be made to support special needs students if world language was a part of their schedule. And I think that my comments may be more accurately reflected with, Ms. Riley questioned Ms. Cave and Ms. Taubman regarding what accommodations would be implemented to support students with identified learning challenges within the elementary world curriculum. Ms. Riley added that she did not believe there was another area within the Medfield public school curriculum that would encourage exclusion from a portion of the curriculum as an appropriate accommodation of need. And then in addition, if we could just add, Ms. Riley stated her concern that whether world language offerings are expanded or remain the same, the elementary world language program needs explicit and measurable benchmarks, as well as a system of evaluation of student learning, to ensure that we are indeed pursuing the district's stated goal of proficiency in the world language curriculum. And I'll send that to you, thanks. Otherwise, I'm happy to approve.
Okay. Do you want to move to approve them, or do you want to wait to see the amended minutes?
I'm happy to approve with those amendments.
Okay.
I'm moving to approve them as amended.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the first item on for new business is the recognition of retirees.
Well, this is always a bittersweet moment of the school committee each year where we recognize the retirees and wish them well, but, you know, thank them for all the great work they've done over the years. Our first recipient is Mary Schiff. Mary has been an art teacher at the high school. It says, "Presented to Mary Schiff for 20 years of dedicated service to the children in the community of Medfield with deep appreciation of Medfield Public Schools." Mary, we're going to miss you, we're going to miss all the great artwork your kids produce, and we wish you all the best in retirement. Come on up.
It's been my pleasure to be part of the Medfield.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Our next retiree is Kathy Willunis. "For 26 years of dedicated service to the children of the community of Medfield Public Schools with deep appreciation of Medfield School Committee, June 5th, 2017." Kathy has been a staple at the Dale Street School, and she is going to be missed by many people, not just her students, but certainly the staff and the principal. She always has a smile on her face, does a great job in the classroom. Now she can focus more time on the Red Sox and on her correcting papers, so Kathy, congratulations.
This was the middle school. This is the building where I started my career. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. Hope Beck is doing well. I've even had some school to be children through the years, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our third retiree who could not make it this evening, Randy Groden, who is our librarian at the Memorial School. Randy's daughter just had twins, and about two weeks ago, she decided that maybe it's time that she spend more time with the family. She's certainly of retirement age and is able to do that financially, so it was a hard decision for her, but she did come up and talk to me and talk to Missy as well, and we wish her all the best, and certainly enjoying her grandchildren is a big part of her life now, so thank you to Randy.
I think we just want, thank you so much for your service. I think that they're such important jobs that you do, and all that time, all those students, all those lives that you touch, and it almost seems, you know, not enough to give a plaque and, you know, a little round of applause, but I think that, you know, the lives that you touch with the work that you do is really the reward for that work, which is amazing. So, thank you so much from all of us, and I'm sure from all of the students that you've touched over the years. You know, it really is such service and such dedication to the teaching profession, so thank you very much. And we're going to miss Randy Groden, I didn't realize that, which makes me sad, and I've never, and we haven't had one in the high school yet, so, but that, yeah, she was, she was a staple in our lives at Memorial for many years, so on to fun, exciting chapters in your lives, and we wish you all the best and success and fun and all kinds of good things in this next chapter, so thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the athletic fee discussion.
So, Madam Chair, Eric Scott and Michael will quickly discuss this with you and answer any questions you may have. If you choose to vote this evening, certainly you can have that decision, but if not, then we can table it to our August meeting, but I think they're going to go through some of the financials and some of the questions around what the fees are. Eric, are you going to give an update as well?
Sure.
Okay.
Eric Scott, Athletic Director. I think I was here about two months ago and kind of gave the update right before the winter season, but I always enjoy coming back and kind of giving updates. So, just to give an update, obviously wonderful ceremony yesterday for our graduates, and as Mr. Potts said, just incredible, the senior recognition night, and just to hear about all the accomplishments that our, you know, students do, it's always very, very impressive. And I think last of us here was just before the end of the winter. We had a great winter season, our girls' basketball team, you know, came home with a state championship, which was obviously an amazing run against a very good competition, and continued to impress right now. We had some teams over the weekend, you know, end up, you know, falling in the state tournament, but we still have girls lacrosse and boys lacrosse. Continuing girls lacrosse will be at Walpole High School tomorrow at 5:00 PM, and boys lacrosse, actually, we're hosting a game tomorrow night at 7:00 PM against our friendly rival, Westwood High School, too, so obviously you can get to one or both. Obviously, the kids enjoy seeing the faces, and, you know, a great year, as you can, on the outside of the school, you know, from, if you're at graduation yesterday, you get to see the kind of the turf, the new turf facility up close and personal. We actually, last week, rolled out the new sound system on the turf as well, that was partly funded by the PTO and the MCPE, which was greatly appreciated as well, and the new state championship sign outside of the high school on the wall, which I think if memory serves me, we have 23 more placards to fill, so if I can retire, you know, maybe I can fill that before I do so, so that would be quite an accomplishment. But a wonderful year, excited to kind of get into my busy time over the summer with ordering and making sure we're set up for success for next year, and many years to come to continue our, the amazing tradition of Medfield High School and all its successes, both in and out of the classroom.
That's the one for increased fee. That's what that was.
I'll listen. I'll have it.
So, Eric and I have been working on just a new fee structure for Medfield. Actually, Eric gathered all the information for the TVL and then other communities that are in the nearby location or have interest entering into the TVL. And we looked at that most of these schools or districts have a two-tiered system. So, tiered one is the majority of the sports, and usually tiered two are either the ice hockey program or programs that have a rental fee for sending teams to outside locations. So, when you, we looked at the tiered one programs, it ranged, it ranged from, I believe, Bellingham charging $200 per student, all the way up to, I believe, it was 300 in Wayland for those students. And then if you look at tiered two, the majority of those were for ice hockey, Wayland charges $1,0275 for ice hockey, all the way down to, I believe, again, or it was Dover Sherburne that had the amount of about $275 for that program. So, we looked at the median for tier one, tier two, the median for tier one was about $235, and for tier two, it was $275. We're in the same boat as a majority of these districts, because they are also looking at fee structures, you know, this is something that we review every year, and then we decide if it's a discussion we should have with the school committee, you know, what do we look like? So, that's the first portion. Then we look at our revolving account and see, you know, what our expenditures have been this year, we look at the past three years, and then we look at what the future is going to look like. And the majority of our increases between, in the last three years, and Eric, you know, chiming in anytime you can, it was the rental fee. So, this year, we're projecting that we're going to be paying to use outside facilities almost $91,000. Most of that is ice time, but we use, the golf team uses an outside facility, gymnastics, swimming, ice hockey, am I missing one?
Ski?
Skiing.
Skiing right now is-
No.
You want to get into skiing?
Skiing will, but it's still self-funded.
Oh, that's right.
Yep, to this point, so, but absolutely something we need to keep on the radar, because if we do end up taking that program on, that would be a facility rental as well, so you'd be absolutely right.
Don't we need to make that decision next year?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's the decision, whether we want to stay part of this cooperative or this-
Yeah, there'd actually be two decisions. It'd be continue the cooperative program that we have currently with Ashland, and then after year three, so it'd be one more year, actually the fourth year, we have to decide whether the school committee could do two things, take it on as a sport that we cover, or continue to, you know, self-fund, or kind of disband that co-op, so three choices. So, at that point, you know, I'll come to you with a recommendation, but so far, you know, nothing but positive things to say about the program.
I heard we did really well.
Yeah.
You know, at States this year, seeing going, and it was actually warm, which was pretty nice, but watching our student athletes compete with a high level of prowess is amazing, and a lot of those niche, you know, athletics might have to get overlooked, but they were, it was really, I mean, there's great competitors, and to give them that opportunity was awesome.
So, no, so I'm just going to go through some of the expenses. So, the major expenses, the rentals, which we're projecting to be around $91,000 for this fiscal year. Transportation, $70,000 of transportation comes out of the revolving account, and then you know we have about $35,000 in our operational budget for athletics. Contractive services, which is our referees, we're projecting $71,000 for this year. Equipment repair and maintenance, we're about $15,600. And then general supplies, and where general supplies comes in is, you know, all the equipment that Eric has to order for, how many programs have we run currently?
You know, 32, if you can, sort of the different levels, and, you know, so it's part of it.
And that's about $71,000. So, if you look at the total expense that we're projecting for June, we're looking at Our revenue coming in for this year, for the fall, we had $107,000 in fees for participation. In the winter, it goes down, so we had about $68,000, and then in the spring, it jumped up to $117,000. We had a, an increase in middle school field and track this spring, so the participation went up, which helped that number. And then we also looked at our gate receipts. We received this year in gate receipts somewhere between $26,000, $27,000, and then we have what we call miscellaneous receipts, where we have donations that come in, and we put them into that account because they're donations made to the athletic department, and that was about $11,000. So, the total revenue is close to $330,000. Our expenses for this year were projected between $325,000 and $326,000, which is a net income of $4,600. Just like all our other revolving accounts, we want to have a little bit more of a buffer, because we know that expenses are going up. You know, referee expenses tend to go up every few years. We don't see an increase for next year, but they haven't increased in a couple of years. We do see that increasing. We do see rental fees going up. You know, right now, our swimming, it was our swimming teams have been using the Kingsbury Club in the Dedham location. Dedham is now in our league, so times might change a little bit. This year, we also had the tennis team used an indoor facility for practices, because we have our tennis courts here in Medfield, so that is a concern for us. So, we're looking at to do a different model than we currently have, and the model is something that we want to transition in two years. So, in year one, which would be next year, which would be the 2017, '18, to have what we call a two-tiered structure, which would be, tier one would be all sports, they would continue to be charged $225 per sport, and then the tier two would be golf, ice hockey, all of our rental sports to go up to $300 per child. In year two, which would be 2018 and 19, to go to a three-tiered system, and that three-tiered system would be, tiered one would be middle school, and all of our running sports, which would be cross-country and track and field, to stay at $225. Our tier two to go up to $250, that would be football, volleyball, soccer, cheering, basketball, lacrosse, tennis, softball, baseball, those to go up to $250. And then our tier three would be, our, continue to do our rental, and those would stay at $300, because those would be moved over in this year. So, moving forward, it would be a three-tiered system. We've worked with Eric on this, and it's similar to what other communities have done, and it gives us a little bit more flexibility, but it also gives pairs an opportunity, you know, a year in advance opportunity for the majority of the sports to move up to that next fee increase. Do you want to add anything else?
And just in the number of, the sheer numbers, so based on the current numbers we have of participants, by the end of year two, this would only be an increase in about $6,000 in revenue towards-
That's what it would be for 2017-18?
2017-18, yes. Yeah, right.
No, that would be by 2018, 2019, and just the first year, I think it's, it was $3,100 for the, because we're going to, we would do it in two stages, so for 17-18, it'd be an additional $3,100. By the end of the second year, 2018, 2019, it'd be, you know, over, just over $6,000. And the reason why we recommend that is, right now, there, as Mr. LaFrancesca said, with about $4,000 left in that account, there's no rainy day fund. If there is a need for a capital item purchase, to be purchased, for instance, right now, our ice maker for the athletic training program is just over 10 years old, and we've been down for almost two weeks now. And so, at $70 a day in ice, it adds up, things like that, that there's no kind of funds set aside, so that would kind of have the ability to be able to purchase a capital item like that that may need to be purchased, or some goals for the fields or something else that might not be in a regular operating budget. In doing so, that would, again, without increasing the gate receipts or anything else, which, again, I kind of, we use sparingly, unless the lights are on, we're trying to not charge for these games, because we want the students to be able to go and watch these contests and, you know, support each other as well, so the, some schools add that in. I know Westwood used to, you know, not charge for these, but then, you know, charge a higher user fee. I think that between the combination and keeping user fees down as, you know, as low as possible is very important.
So, the other thing is, there was 896 students at the high school, and 753 of those students participate in some type of athletic, in their athletic department, which is about 84% of the students at Medfield High School participate in athletic.
And at least at one, at least one sport.
And at least one sport, yeah. So.
Is there a family cap for, or-
Is there a family cap for, or an individual cap for fees, or do you do three...
Currently, the school committee does not have a policy on a family cap.
And the last time we raised these fees was in a dark room down the hall before any of you were here.
Yes, before my time.
Do you know when it was?
I do not.
I remember voting on an athletic fee increase, but I don't remember when that was.
And I asked my predecessor, and it wasn't in his last four or five years, so it's probably been at least a decade since this was...
No, it hasn't been that long, but, because I definitely voted on one, so how long have I been here, seven years?
It's probably like six years ago, though.
Yeah.
It's been a while. Are you done, Chris? Or did you have another question?
No, the other question I had was, you have gymnastics in both tier two and tier three on both of them?
They, they would be, I apologize, they would be tier three.
Tier three, okay. And with respect to, is football not a high cost? I always think because of the equipment, that football must be a high-cost sport. Is it not a high-cost sport?
So football also has the highest gate receipts.
Oh, I see. I guess that makes sense.
Costs are sunk.
There is a reconditioning fee for equipment, but on the scheme of things, it's definitely held in comparison to a rental fee for, for ice, for like ice time and things like that, so...
And the rental income we get from renting out our sports facility goes directly to operating budget, right?
No, that goes...
It goes to building facilities.
It goes to building facilities. But it doesn't go to this?
Doesn't go on this one.
Okay.
Where do the uniforms get charged? Under what category?
Supplies.
Supplies.
So I have a question. If, so this increased, you know, it's, it's a really modest increase when you look at, so where, where do you play, if you have to, you know, get a new place for the swim and dive team to be, or, you know, tennis courts, or a rink, where does that factor in? Or is that like a budget breaker, considering there's, there's no buffer?
So what Eric and I have done, we did this with the Kingsbury Club, we negotiate, and we go back and forth with them, and we make sure that we try our best to fit it within our budget.
Mm-hmm.
The problem with Kingsbury is that there's no diving.
Right, right, no, I know. But I'm saying, even if it's a rink, if they, all of a sudden, they, their prices, you know, skyrocket, or whatever, you're negotiating, and that...
Couple of years ago, remember Norfolk pulled out right before the season started?
Yeah.
You know, so they have to scramble and find ice time, you know?
And it's only becoming more so.
Yep.
You know, even take, for instance, the, the Canton Rink, that's right outside of Ponkapon.
Yeah.
The roof collapsed two years ago, they haven't done anything, so all the, that ice time had to be displaced, other rinks as well. So we could always use more rinks, so if anybody has, you know, I would love a rink in Medfield Hospital. But, you know, without that hap...
It's an interesting point.
Yes, without that happening, you know, we're going to continue to pay that rental fee, you know, and it's, it's, you know, it's, we, we do have a number of student athletes. I think for boys, last year was forty-eight, so we had forty-eight people playing in an ice hockey program, and for, for young women, we had twenty, so it's, you know, that's a good number of percentage.
I guess, sorry. Now, just a random question. Why is cheering a tier two versus a tier one?
Because, well, cheering also has competitions that they go to.
Yes, and cheering is, cheering, two years ago, was brought back as a sport, and, you know, in those numbers, in the past, have been tough to, I think we finished the season last year with ten athletes. So that's a sport, too, that we kind of need, always need to, you know, look at going forward. When we had, as in, in a club, in our intramural team, we had forty-eight students competing, and then they went to a vars, and as an intramural sport, you could play another sport and still cheer at games. And what happened when they went back to a varsity sport is, when you can only play one varsity sport per season, and so those numbers have dropped. So it is actually, for uniforms and competitions, there is a cost with it for, and even just to pay a coach as well, so we'll have to kind of revisit that as well.
Okay. I have two questions.
Sure.
One is exceptionally unpopular, but I'm just going to ask it. Are we raising it enough? I hate to put any kind of burden on a camera or a family, but...
Honestly, I think, you know, we'll be in front of you in a few years, absolutely.
Yeah, so...
We're trying to find that balance with, with, you know, because we haven't, as Mr. Morrison said, in seven years, raised those. We want to try to keep costs down, but we want to provide those opportunities, and if we're unable to provide the opportunities, you know, that's, that's when it's going to be problematic, and to have zero wiggle room, or, you know, something for a rainy day right now is scary, but I also don't want to make it a cost where you're going to preclude student athletes or parents from, you know, suggesting that they're, because I like those numbers, I take a great deal of pride in the fact that, you know, we are between eighty-five and ninety percent of, you know, of our students are just playing athletics, and I never want, you know, financial burdens to become a reason why they're not.
That was my next question.
I mean, this...
What's our matrix for sliding and fee forgiveness?
So, so we are adopting the same philosophy that we have for, you know, kindergarten...
So free and reduced.
It's the free and reduce application.
That has not been the case.
Which has not been the case in the past.
Isn't that a standard rule?
Not, not...
It's not been the case for that long.
Not for...
Oh, okay, so that's now going to be instilled?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, just to go back to the expenses, you know, transportation, rental, and referees, those are things that we can't control.
Of course.
I mean, just think about transportation, you've seen the contracts in the last few years, you know, so that alone, even, I think it might be longer than seven years, but just in seven years, the amount of transportation has gone up, and we haven't raised the fee that, that pays for a good chunk of that.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, the other understanding is that this is not the entire athletic budget. This is just revolving account expenses.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's a great clarification. I have one other question, it's more philosophical, town-wide thing. As we are thinking about this unicorn we call Hospital Hill, I'm so interested to hear how, again, working within town departments, we can be thinking about how the school and Parks and Rec can possibly be thinking about collaborating or understanding that we can use...
I, I can jump in, we actually have met.
Please, please do.
And we've already had meetings and collaboration with all the stakeholders...
Okay.
...to discuss different options.
Because I truly hate that giant sucking sound in Norfolk.
Yes.
You know, like, it just seems like there's so much that we'd be keeping in town.
And that, that was actually...
I think ice rink was the first time we brought it.
Yes, we have our wants, our needs...
They said it was too small for...
Yeah, and our wishes, so, and we, we've laid all those out, and...
But we can talk, I mean, it's, it's a nice rink, and, and you can fill ice time easily, right?
So ice...
It's, it's an indoor facility where you can have multiple events inside it, and that's correct.
I mean, currently, if they're talking about a sixty-three thousand square foot facility in Fort Kicks, it's like, what, eighty-three or something like that? I mean, it's a pretty decent chunk of space.
And the third thing is, it's tennis courts, I mean, so...
And indoor baseball and softball.
Sure.
And how much are we using slippers or any other place right now, and it all, or are we just totally...
Yeah, using slippers.
We are, and again, that, when it gets back to the negotiation piece, and, you know, they use our facilities, and, and, you know, you know, we kind of ask for things back, but, you know, a lot of, there, there's not many, or if any, ice rinks that I know that are, that are going belly up. I mean, there's a reason why, you know, if you go to Marlboro, there's eight and a half rinks under one roof, and they're building two right, two more right now, so it's...
Who do go to Marlboro?
Yeah.
Four times a weekend.
If you build it, they will come.
Thank you, I just wanted to...
Yeah.
...hear a little bit about how we might be collaborating as a town, and kind of managing our expenses together. Thank you.
You're welcome. Great idea. We'll continue that collaboration.
Yeah. Yes?
I have a question about the, about the requirement that's going to be placed in terms of the fee, the reduced, the requirement in terms of free lunch, reduced criteria. What were we at financially in terms of the number of families that were asking for fee forgiveness, for scholarship, for...
Yep, I don't have the exact numbers, it's not a high number, but in the past, we've taken each request individually, and most of the time, it was more of setting up a payment plan instead of a total forgiveness. But there are a number of families that, for, you know, whatever reason, are going through a financial hardship, and that gets back to my other point, you know, it's, it's, you know, we'll, we'll find a way. I mean, I'll speak with Mr. LaFrancesca, there are some programs in towns like that to kind of get that, that revenue back, and again, I would hate to see any family not be able to participate because of that, so...
And the free and reduced lunch, kind of, sorry, I was at only graduate school, and my verbal abilities are really falling as the night goes, but the free and reduced lunch kind of barrier, we, that does not in any way preclude working out fee plans or anything like that? So that we're still able to be flexible in terms of how we manage the revolving cap?
Just a set of criteria that makes that a consideration.
In the past, in the past, as I understand, the Medfield way, somebody sort of said they couldn't pay, we more or less took that on faith. People very rarely did it, and so I don't think it was necessarily abused, but there wasn't any objective way to, to measure, you know, who's, who should or shouldn't be called upon to pay, and so I think the free and reduced lunch standard gives us some objective...
Thank you for the word that I was looking for.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Completely agree.
Thank you.
So, and I appreciate that you do that, because, I mean, I think all of us agree, you would never want, so, it, it's so hard to find a balance in so many things, that where you need, you know, just the circumstances require that you increase the revenue in the fees, and yet we still want to make it accessible for all of our students, because...
And our families are still paying for cleats and equipment.
Right, well, that's what I was going to say, like, to us, we're like, oh, well, that's not a big deal, but then you have two kids in the middle school, a couple of kids in the high school, and all of a sudden, you're talking, you know, two hundred dollars, and then you need to buy, you know, all this other kind of stuff that goes along with it. So we're, we are aware that, that there, it's a, it's a lot of money for some families, so I don't think we ever take those fees lightly either, or think, oh, well, it's twenty-five dollars in two years. For some families, that's, that's a lot, and they're looking, you know, at things with a very tight budget. So I appreciate that you're also doing the same thing for our families and our students, because that's important. But I think, are we, you have one more?
I have one more question. Just, I just made a note in my calendar, because I know I have to pay for Rachel to play field hockey next year, tonight. You probably, since June one, you've been collecting for fall sports already, and many of these tier two, well, several...
Year one, so for next year, the only things that are going to go up are the...
Oh, it's tier three?
Yep, would be the, starting for the winter sports.
And none of those are...
So I'm not going to come and ask you for more money.
That's good to know.
Five bucks up right now.
Exactly, that's right. Okay, that was my question.
So those won't change?
Yeah, everything else stays the same.
Yeah, okay, now I realize those are all winter sports, yeah. Winter is golf's a spring sport, right?
Yep.
Fall.
It's a fall sport, but we're going to keep that at...
That's, that's at two-fifty...
Correct.
...already, so that's, that's twenty-five dollars higher than, you know, our other, right now, lacrosse sport.
So the proposal, though, for two thousand seventeen, eighteen is for golf to three-hundred?
It is, but because we already started collecting, we're not going to go back to those, to those families and ask for an additional...
Okay, so, so then my question is, if you didn't pay till tomorrow, if we voted tonight, didn't pay till tomorrow, golf families are still going to get a kid fifty?
We're going to grandfather, we'll grandfather the fall sport.
Yeah, we're speaking with Mr. LaFrancesca, I was under the impression that that wouldn't start until the winter, so even for, regardless of when you pay, up to, you know, July first, you know, it's still going to be the same fee.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
I think I am.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, given the modest nature of the inside, I'm concerned about that. I move Mr. LaFrancesca's recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, too. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school choice vote.
Madam Chair, I ask you to put that on the agenda, because each year, the Department of Education requires us to make a vote whether or not we're going to participate in the school choice program. Remember, the school choice program, if we opened up seats in any grade level or the entire district, would allow students from any town to, to come in, and, you know, there's different ways of structuring that. You could say that you have twenty-five seats in one grade level, fifty seats in another, or we could open up the entire district, which some, some places do that. You know, based on what we have for class sizes and, and the room, and the space, quite frankly, especially the elementary schools, I, I ask that you vote not to participate in school choice this year, but to take it up again next year and, and look at it, maybe through a different lens, based on our needs next year and our enrollment.
And just to clarify, this is something that you vote on every year?
Each year, each year.
And so I think that, yeah, if, if...
So you, if you do vote to participate at some point, it's only a one-year participation, so...
Although you, you commit to those kids for the duration of...
You do.
What's there in there?
You do.
I move the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Madam Chair, the next agenda item is a request to change the calendar that you approved earlier in the year. A couple of things have taken place since our last meeting. One is, we're looking to, to have a keynote speaker at Digital Learning Day, and he wasn't available for the March twenty-ninth day, which was originally what we had for the full professional development day, but is available on April tenth, which is scheduled for a half-day. The other thing that happened, actually, just within the week, is that the Department of Education released its tenth-grade language arts MCAS schedule, and they have scheduled, and it's different than elementary, elementary is a window in which they can do it, high school is, is pretty strict on three days that they can do it, and the twenty-ninth is one of those days. So I'd be coming to you, asking you to change it because of that anyway. So what I'm asking for is, if you would consider having March twenty-ninth become a release day, and April tenth become a full day of professional development, and Digital Learning Day would move from March twenty-ninth to April tenth. So, you know, we've looked at it administratively, leadership team, the technology leadership team has sat down and gone over it, actually works, works pretty good for them as well. We originally considered maybe doing the day after, which was April second, the day after Easter, and try to keep a four-day week, but it wasn't, it wouldn't have worked for the keynote speaker that we're trying to get.
So that's two, two four-day weeks in a row, right?
Correct.
And is...
And vacation right after.
And vacation right after. Is, can you, can you administer MCAS on our release day?
We can.
Okay.
It's only one session.
I have exactly one son who's going to be very unhappy that you don't release him on April second, because this is his birthday, but...
We should make that a day up every year.
Right.
So they, just clarify, Chris, there's one session that day, and I did speak to the high school about that today, because it allows them at seven forty to go over directions, start the test at eight o'clock, and give them a little bit over three hours to take that one session, versus a two-session the day before, which takes a full day.
Even with kids who have accommodations for extended learning time?
Correct.
Just got to push it.
And, and, so we talked about it, if there is an issue where we do have a handful of kids that want additional time, or that need additional time, that we'll have folks there to proctor that for them, make a sale a little bit longer. Because the, the rule is the school day, the length of the school day, so we could extend that if we need to for those kids that are taking it to the actual end of the school day versus a release day. I mean, you've got to put this on the department a little bit. I mean, everyone does their, their schedules by January, February, and they just release it May thirty-first.
And that'll be, will that still be MCAS, or is that MCAS?
MCAS two-point-o. No, I'm sorry, it's still MCAS for, for grade ten.
This is tenth grade, right?
Yeah, tenth grade.
So that, that's pen and paper?
Yes. No technology.
That's the last, is that the last year of that?
One more year.
Right. I move the superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so I'll, we will redo the calendar, make those changes, repost that on the calendar, I'll shoot an email out to parents with the calendar on it, letting them know what the change.
Yeah, 'cause we said, a three-day week, I mean, three-day weekend following year, vacation is probably not a travel plan, but some people will travel.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, too, and sending out that calendar. The next item is the secretarial group contract vote.
So we have, uh, come to an agreement, uh, with the secretary group, and, um, I know that was discussion in executive session today, uh, of the particulars, and this needs to be something that you vote in open session. It was a very good negotiation process, uh, with the secretarial union. Interesting thing is that the same representative represents secretaries, custodial maintenance, and cafeteria, so, you know, you certainly have a good relationship with, with all those folks and, and try to, you know, get through that negotiation that we need to do. So we're still in process with the custodians, we're still in process with the cafeteria group, uh, we hope to have both of those done by the August twenty-first meeting, our next school committee meeting. We feel pretty confident about that, based on the way negotiations are going, but I would ask you, uh, to vote on that as we discuss the executive session.
So the, the proposal is, is, is it two, two, two?
Correct.
Okay, and the total cost, or increased cost over three years, um, that Michael gave us is a hundred and, roughly a hundred and four thousand dollars?
Over three years.
Over three years.
And, and a lot of that is based on, um, you know, we asked for a couple of things that, that cost money in the contract, so we asked for the second secretary of the elementary school, that's typically, um, at twenty-five hours, has been twenty-five hours a week forever. We've asked that, for that person to go to thirty hours a week, that certainly costs more money.
And that's effective FY nineteen, right?
FY nineteen, right, not next year. And the other piece is that, you know, one of the things that I've struggled with a little bit here is how the elementary secretaries are non-existent in the summertime. And there's a lot of stuff that happens in the summertime, there's a lot of deliveries that come in, and a lot of that gets just put away until the two weeks before school starts, and everyone scrimmages to get that work done. So we, we wanted to negotiate with the secretaries that, uh, we added five days, uh, a couple of years ago in their contract. We'd add, we'd like to add ten additional days in which they can meet with their principal and decide when that ten-day window is, it can be.
Five additional days, two total of ten, right?
Thank you, five additional days, ten total, so those ten days can be however they just, they decide, the, the principal and secretary, so it could be a little bit in, in July, and some in August, it can be all in August, it can be all in July, whoever they feel best, you know, works for their school. But we just really need staffing, you know, we have staffing, twelve-month staffing at the middle school and high school, and guess what, lots of stuff still happens at the elementary schools during that time as well, so those three schools need some coverage, and we run our summer programs in there as well, so. Um, it was important, and, and the secretaries recognize that as well, so that, that costs money as part of the contract, but those were things that we asked for, and they didn't.
I move to approve the, uh, secretarial contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you, negotiation subcontractor.
Thank you, thank you, subcontractor, appreciate that. Now, Madam Chair, for old business, we have some donations, we have a list of them today, so I'd like to read those off, if I may. Um, from graduating class of two thousand seventeen, high school banners, which will be on the hold as you enter the high school, uh, one thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars, eighty-nine cents, and building maintenance power equipment, which got a nice round of applause yesterday. Two thousand seven hundred fifty dollar, two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Uh, three hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-four cents from Memorial PTO to purchase dry erase brush, brush-owned kits. Six hundred dollars from Memorial PTO to purchase the book Kids Deserve It for each faculty member at Memorial School. Three thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and seventy cents from Memorial PTO to purchase twenty-five game sets and twenty-five sets of ten, twenty-two sets of ten books. Two hundred ten dollars to Wheelock School from A-plus School Rewards Bonus Bucks Stop and Shop Program. One hundred fifty-three dollars to Blake Middle School for, uh, A-Hold USA A-plus Reward Program. Two hundred thirteen dollars to Wheelock Gift Account from Wheelock PTO, and one hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-one cents to Wheelock Gift Account to Wheelock, Wheelock PTO. So there.
I move approval.
Second.
Acceptance, I move acceptance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate that, and you know, the, the, the work that our, um, our supporting groups do in this town is amazing, and you see that each month as, as we do those approvals and the donations that they do. PTO, MCP just do great things, and we really appreciate the work that they do.
We're still sending, as a committee, thank you letters to where there's, where there's somebody coming, yeah, definitely.
Thank you. So Madam Chair, the, uh, one item I have for the report to the committee, um, as I did last, last meeting, we had goal one, I have some update, a six-month update on Medfield twenty twenty-one on goals two through five, and as I did last time, I'll just highlight a few and not go through the seven pages of them, but, um, first one, under well-being, goal number two, continue to offer guest speakers to the community and staff, and positively impacts, um, students, I think that's, you know, a really important thing that we, we started this year with Medfield Talks. Uh, we've had three great speakers, and was, was, um, you know, certainly, uh, a lot of participation by parents, which, and a lot of great feedback by parents. So we had one on student stress, uh, with Dr. Michael Thompson, executive functioning with Michael Delman, and alcohol, drugs, and adolescent, adolescent brain with Dr. Ruth Poty. So a lot of great feedback from all three of those presenters, and we're working, the committee and I are working on, on getting presenters for next year as well. Um, just in addition to that, all of our seniors participated in the One Love Foundation training on, on dating and relationship violence, which is really powerful. This came from a parent that, that talked to us about that, brought it to our attention, and, um, Dave Worley did a great job organizing it and really spearheading the entire thing for, for our seniors. Uh, we actually trained, uh, students that would be facilitators after they watched the movie, so the movie's about forty-five minutes, the entire senior class watched it together, then went into classrooms and had a conversation about it, really, really great job by our kids. And we feel like that's something that we want our kids to experience each year going forward, before they go off to college, or when they, they leave Medfield High School, because it is reality, the, the dating violence, and we need to make sure that they have, you know, more information as they go off, and, um, you know, the feedback from them was really important as well. The other piece is in September, Ruth Poty's gonna come back and work with our kids at the high school, and we're gonna, she and I talked, uh, last week, we're gonna try to filter that down to Blake as well, the eighth graders. But I think those of you that were at her, her talk, pretty powerful, uh, you know, getting a sense of what drugs and alcohol and what the use can be on the, on the adolescent brain and the developing brain, and why things are different now than they were when we were younger. You know, talking in terms of, of the heroin, opiate epidemic, um, just in terms of marijuana from the seventies and eighties, what it's like now, uh, much stronger, much more addictive, so all those conversations that are really important to have, and she's gonna come back and work with our kids on that, and we had to schedule it almost, you know, six months in advance, because her schedule is so busy, but she is taking a day off of work to come back to Medfield and do that for us. She's actually gonna be in either North Fork or Rentham coming up in the next couple of weeks, I saw her posting about her, it's June twelfth, she's gonna be doing the presentation again for parents.
'Cause I think a lot of parents are lamenting that they missed it.
Maybe I'll, I'll find that out, maybe I can send that out as well, so people can see that.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause it, just to let them know that she's doing that, and she's coming back in September to work with her kids.
Yeah, I think a lot of people really are disappointed that they missed her, 'cause the.
Well, I think one of the most powerful parts for me was, and I've seen her before, but, you know, she forces you to self-reflect on your own practices, right?
Oh, completely.
As a parent, and so I thought that was really, really powerful, um, and, and again, the feedback I got from parents that night who went home and emailed me, and then the next day, they, they felt, you know, it was pretty powerful as well. So continue to work on that, um, as you know, Dave Worley came in and did the presentation for you on the RISE program at the high school, um, first year, very successful, in September, I'll give you the data that, that shows how many kids went through that program and, and give you a real sense of the impact, but, uh, I think you saw that from what Dave presented, and just anecdotally from parents that I've talked to and sent me emails, that they've, they're really pleased with it, and it's really helped their kids out, uh, and gave them a, a place to, to go in that transition when they need to be back in school, but just, we're not ready to go, come back full-time. So we've got great feedback on that, and we'll continue, uh, with that program, and we'll have more, more information in September. Um, looking into, um, the hiring personnel, resource officer guidance at the elementary level, and adjustment counselor at the high school, you know, I think Russ has been a great addition at the high school, and he's been working with middle school kids as well, uh, a lot of good feedback on his, his role as a school adjustment, uh, counselor, it's just something that high schools have now. Shocking that we didn't have one for so long, but it's, it's an important position to have in high schools. Uh, resource officer, again, that's really something that the state had wanted us to do a couple of years ago, and, and, you know, certainly things I can't say publicly, but she has really helped out in a lot of situations in this district, um, that people don't know about, 'cause they wouldn't know about it, 'cause there, there are privacy issues around it, but certainly the need for a, uh, resource officer was here. And the guidance at the elementary level, um, you know, when you start to bring in folks from other places in leadership positions, and, and they see the need, and they see what they've had in other places in these, these leadership positions, certainly guidance was one, and I know that, that parents have been pleased about having additional guidance support at the elementary school, so that, that's been going fairly well, and we'll, we'll take a look at that as well, we'll, we'll sit down with, with Shelley and see, you know, what her role is in terms of, of the resource officer, and with the chief, and see how we can expand that, or take away or add or something, so we're doing that this summer to get a sense of what we need to do there.
Sorry, Jeff, before you move on to the next one, one of the other ones, um, two point one point one, the district will promote and support collaboration with parents and guardians, and it's listed, the pins, the principal copy, et cetera. So I, I'm hoping in the new year, we might delve deeper into that, because I think at each school, there are, you know, we have global kind of, um, things we want to address, and I think at each school, though, I, I think the strategic plan was more global, and I think some families feel that they would like to really address each school, for example, homework policy, what is the homework policy at one school, or, you know, so just, I, I just think this is such an important element of the strategic plan, that I'm hoping we're gonna.
So.
You know, have more committees, or.
Right, so we have a committee that's gonna be lined up next year, and we're gonna look at, at homework across the board.
Yeah.
So I'm meeting with some parents in a couple of weeks, maybe next week, um, who have some ideas around that, and we're gonna have, excuse me, a committee with, uh, teachers, administrators, and parents to look at the homework policy, look at that. So what is.
At each, at each building?
It's gonna be a K to twelve initiative, so we're gonna look across the board and get a sense of where.
So you'll have a swath of parents from each.
Much like what we did for, for World Language, that kind of committee, where we, we, we sit down and look at that, I mean, certainly, there's a, there's a ton of research out there that, that talks about the effectiveness or not of, of homework, and.
But even basic policies, like, as in posting homeworks assignment Sunday night at nine, it's due the next, you know, just the basics, just back to basics as well.
And, and then what, what does that look like at the elementary level, you know, does that, is it, is it ten minutes every year, so ten minutes of homework?
Right.
Which could be reading in kindergarten, or is it, you know, is it no homework at those levels, and what, what does that look like, so just have those conversations and look at that, and get a real sense of what that is, I mean, I think the other thing that we're gonna look at, that, you and I have talked about in the May, is scheduling at the secondary level.
Completely.
You know, and we need to look at that, that whole schedule, we look at the starting times at, at secondary level, all those things that, um, you know, that people are talking about, we need to look at it. You know, we're, we're really close, you know, we're, we're doing CPR next year, the according program review, and, you know, the middle school is, is low on time, you know, they're low on time for instructional time there, you know, so we need to look at that, and they, they typically just follow the high school, because that's just what we do. You know, they follow the high school schedule, and, you know, the buses do it, so we must have to do it that way, well, not necessarily, you know, we can have conversations around it, I mean, there, there's that legislation that's out there right now, saying that, that no schools in the secondary level can start before eight-thirty. Now, is it getting traction, yes, will it pass, who knows, but, you know, if that passes, they'd have to give you some time to implement that, but the, the movement is so strong around that area that it's, it's making its way on Beacon Hill, I mean, that's something that we need to.
Yeah.
So those are all embedded in that, and we, you know, we've talked about that with the strategic plan, and that, that's the future, as we look at, at some of those, so homework, scheduling, those things, and really engage people in that conversation.
Good, as long as it's on the radar, because I just.
I mean, much like the elementary school day, I mean, we had lots of people on that, in that committee, I mean, you were on that committee, and Jesse, you were on that committee, we, we, we did a lot of work on that. And no matter, you know, what opinions are of people that are on that committee, it was very inclusive, and, you know, we, we got a lot done, so, very similar to that, there'll be folks there, and, and let them, you know, look at the research and have those conversations.
I mean, so I have a question about the, even the homework, um, committee, how are you gonna go about, um, finding parent, um, volunteers?
So, my sense is that, that the, the four parents I meet with very soon will be very interested in that, in that committee, and then I'll just put an open invitation out to people.
Okay.
We can't have a, a cast of fifty.
Right, right.
But we can, we can certainly have.
It's very easy to make a decision amongst fifty people.
Yeah, yeah, it's so easy.
Just ask the people who are putting together Medfield State Hospital Plan.
Right.
Right, right, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. Well, I just spent another seven hundred thousand in consulting, and it worked out great. Um, so I think that's, you know, that, that's where we are with that, and, and we'll, we'll be probably talking more about that at the August meeting, as we kind of kick off the year, and some of the things we're looking at.
Thank you.
So goal number three, looking at the whole child, um, examining, examine the current administrative structure of special education, I think we did a lot on that in the last meeting, we spent some time on, on looking at what is effective, and what are the key positions that we need to add that haven't been in the district, and, and how can we arrange that. So we presented it at the May meeting, we're gonna implement that, uh, this year, and then we'll evaluate it, and if it, if it works, we'll, we'll keep it, if not, we'll tweak it again, uh, because it is, it's very, very new, this is a new structure for Medfield, not new for other places, but new for here, so we'll tweak it if we need to, but we think it's the best, the best decision for kids, you know, going forward, so.
Can you tell me just a little bit, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, a little bit about what it would look like if it worked, like, where, where would you see an increase in, what would, what would you see as working better, and what would you see as being perhaps a detractor, like, can you identify the, just some of those?
So I would see, um, I would wanna make sure that every timeline was dead-on for special education, and that communication with parents is, is, um, an important piece of that, and everything takes place when it should.
So a reduction in kind of going back and doing re-evals and additional evaluations, and.
Uh, and, and so that, that particular piece, I mean, I think that at the ground level, um, taking away all the paperwork piece from teachers, and not expecting them to, to do initial and, and, and review meetings, and, and have a team chair doing that, so that they can spend more time on what they're supposed to be doing, working with kids, developing curriculum, assessments, that kind of thing.
And, and with students, what would that be like?
Um, I would say that would, would look like more time with adults, you know, more face time with, with adults, and, and getting additional support, I mean, I think what we'll do at the end is we'll get a sense from the teachers, is, you know, have you, by taking that off your plate, what did that do for you? You know, what did that do, and then, based on that data at the end of next year, well, I'll have to do it before the end of next year, I have to do it probably mid, um, is get a sense of what we'll do for staffing in the following year, you know, because clearly we wanna keep the caseloads down, uh, and if, you know, we have, we've had eleven children on IEPs in the elementary, uh, move in since the, the end of April, so, you know, there's definitely a need there for additional staffing, and we wanna make sure that we're, you know, providing that for our kids, providing the services for our kids. And we'll also look at, you know, if a child needs a specific program, that, uh, because we don't have that program here, doesn't mean the child doesn't get it, so maybe developing, you know, developing a program to meet the needs of a kid, and not trying to fit a kid into a box, if you know what I mean? I think that, you know, those measures are really important, I think that's what we're gonna try to do.
Thank you.
Sure. And, you know, the last one is, you know, facilities and equipment, you know, combining the role of director of facilities with the town, and that's something that, um, has been a, has been an interesting, uh, process, Jerry started in November, and inherited a lot of HVAC issues all winter, and some roofing issues that, you know, we certainly knew about. So he's, um, he's been working hard and, and learning, there's a learning curve there, we have a lot of new buildings in the town side, but certainly five new buildings on, on the school side, and, uh, he's done a great job with that, so, and then managing a whole new staff, that's why we wanted to get someone with experience in doing that, and, you know, with the right specs and all, he does all that, so we're happy with his performance, and, uh, he had his first graduation yesterday and survived it, so that was good, thanks to Michael. Michael did a great job all weekend, uh, helping coordinate all that setup, Michael was here, um, Saturday morning for all that, and, and Sunday as well, so, that went really well, but that's, you know, you certainly, we have all the other stuff, but I wanna just highlight a few that are, that are in there, and we're still working on that dashboard, with it, we're gonna meet this summer with the town to, uh, develop that new website, and try to see what that looks like, and provide a dashboard for Medfield twenty twenty-one, so people can see that.
What's the timeline for the website?
Uh, Owen said we're gonna start with preliminary talks in the summertime, and, and the real issue is, is that we have to decide whether we wanna migrate all the information that's there onto a new format, or we wanna rebuild the entire thing. My sense is that we spent a lot of time a couple of years ago redoing everything, that we wanna migrate and improve, you know, so maybe improve the look of it, but have that information, have more information on there as well.
Do you have a team looking at other school websites?
We do, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Or what's important to us?
Which we did last time, too.
Okay.
So last time, we went through and looked at a lot of websites that we liked, and then we took bits and pieces to do that, uh, so they're gonna come to us with kind of the canned websites, but we're gonna pick and choose what we want, but that, the information that we have on there, we think is important to migrate, we're just gonna put it right up there.
Uh, will it in any way be integrated with the town website?
It is.
It's, um, and I had heard some, uh, conversation in a different town committee, that somebody was looking at doing a master town calendar, so that it's not just the school stuff, but it's selectmen, and, you know, recycling, and.
Yeah, I hadn't heard that.
So when things like, you know, like, the hospital night happens at the same time.
Yeah, at the same time, yeah.
Liturgy, we can kind of.
Yeah.
Keep those constituencies from having to miss things that are very important.
Mm-hmm.
To them, you know.
Right.
So that's not, good, great, thank you.
Or, or people could look at the school calendar before they make plans.
These sorts of decisions, yeah, well.
Just a hint.
Ours is separate forehead.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how we'd have one person to vault that, but that would be.
I don't know either, I was fascinated that one person would wanna do that, but, I'm hopeful.
Can I ask a quick question, just on access to documents?
Sure.
It's a great update, is there any way that can be appended or attached to the minutes for the meetings?
Sure.
'Cause it's great to get that and know what's going on, and.
In fact, we're gonna post it all on, on, on my site on the web, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah. No problem.
Okay, so for, um, do you. Okay, so for, do you have it in the district recognition?
Oh, sorry, yeah, the last item. So I just wrote down some things here. I just wanna thank everyone and congratulate our twenty seventeen graduates yesterday for a wonderful graduation. You know, it was, it was a busy week with them, for all of them. They had senior rec night and then class day. And then we had the event at Four Kicks on Friday night and then the all-night grad party thing on Saturday and the graduation on Sunday. So I I mentioned them yesterday, you must be sick of wearing the blue gowns. I mean, you've had them on for four days straight. They they just did a wonderful job and so proud of all of them. And I thought it went really well yesterday. The rain held off. We, Robert and I were in the front looking at the radar and it just kept getting closer and closer. I think by the time we.
I did the same thing.
By the time we finished, I think it was right in Worcester when we finished, so we just made. But I wanna thank everyone for that, that really went well.
Can I ask a quick question about the the hallway walkthrough of the elementary schools?
Sure.
I thought that was fantastic and I was wondering where the idea came from and if we can continue to impress that idea on future classes?
Yeah, I think that's gonna be a tradition going forward. I mean, I think it, it was fascinating. The little ones were a riot, you know, they were really, really funny at Memorial and they, and they would see, I think one kid saw Chris McGory and said, I think he plays for the Celtics, you know, because he's about six foot five, you know, so that was, that was hilarious. But I got, I got an email from a parent that said, you know, I have five kids in the district and it was so neat for all my kids to see my son go through and and it really was special and and emotional for the teachers. I mean, they were, they were pretty emotional with it. It was, it was great, so. That was something that Robert had brought to me about and and talked to me about it. And it's it's somehow caught on, I've seen it on Twitter and other places as well. It's really caught on. But something that, you know, the kids, we did a survey of the kids right after and they said absolutely it's something that you should do every year, so we're happy about it. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay.
No, and I would just offer the the work you guys put in for graduation really showed. I think it's just a lot of work every year and it really went off very well. And and I know that, you know, it's not easy trying to get that logistics done, not not just the graduation, but the week before, too, so. Great job for Michael and and everybody.
A good team together, really good team.
Mary Jean, yeah. So that was it.
I just wanna congratulate the, actually, I have a few things. Congratulate the graduates and the parents of graduates. It's your last one, huh?
Yes.
Luzzled up. A couple of things, on hiring, are we, do you still have, where are you in hiring? Pull up?
I'm meeting with the leadership team tomorrow. I tend to go through all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, we still have some podiums out there and and all that, but we're gonna get, I'm gonna get a hiring update with them tomorrow.
Okay. With respect to the presentations, and we talked about, you know, the the One Love presentation, I, I still hear a lot of parents hosting parties for kids here and elsewhere. I know the DA's office for, does a social host liability presentation. I don't think we've had it here before, but.
We had it two years ago, three years ago, my second year.
Something we might wanna bring back. It always blows my mind to see how many people are providing alcohol to these kids.
Maybe every other year thing, maybe, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, on one hand, I get it, you know, that you you wanna respect these kids and think they're adults. They're not adults and and people, you know, unfortunately, people die, I mean, somebody died in New Hampshire coming from a graduation party yesterday, so.
Right. To that point, Chris, as you know, we're a part of MCAP with Pete Peterson and some other folks. And so we developed a survey that's gonna be going out this week and it's all about parent perceptions of alcohol use. So what we wanna do is get all this data and then put this next to the results of the Metro West Health Survey and see if they match up. Because lots of times, and what Needham has done it a couple of times, Westwood just did theirs, they're seeing that it doesn't match up. So that the kids are saying one thing, so we just gotta see what that looks like. You know, anonymous, it's anonymous survey. We did get the Metro West Health stuff this week, so that just came in last Friday.
Okay.
So we'll, there's a, is a meeting that Sukal is going to this week or in the next week to kick that off. And then we'll be reviewing the data over the summer and do a presentation for you again.
Is there something included? And this just popped into my mind with some of these different, even the, the Medfield speaker that that came about the whole vaping thing. I I know it, it seems new, but it is, it's growing so rapidly, it's out of control.
So I had mentioned to Ruth about that and she talked about that in her, in her talk for a little bit. You know, part of the issue is that, and Ruth had mentioned it, that it's the oils they're putting in. She she feels like from her research that a lot of this is formaldehyde in there. So the kids just don't know what they're doing with it.
Yeah.
It's a, it's the the taste, it's the smell, whatever it is, and they're doing that. And, you know, there's the THC oils that are really a problem because it's, you know, you can't smell it.
Go ahead, I was reading an article tonight, the FDA was supposed to take over regulation of e-cigarettes and those kind of things. Effective last summer, and that's been phased in and the current FDA is probably not gonna do that.
Yeah.
So it'll remain an unregulated industry.
Apparently it's all from China. The stuff that we've confiscated here, I was looking at it with Jeff Spurling and it looks like the oils or whatever they are, are originating from China, they're coming over. And then the actual vape, you know, those are, they're buying online, they're.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, I think everybody here, no, I mean, they're, it's everywhere. It's, it's, I think rampant. It's scary because they're not understanding. I was talking to a doctor the other day, like, the the amount of time that it it crystallizes and hardens on your lungs, that it's like, you know, talk about an iron lung situation. I mean, it is, it is so scary. And I think kids aren't, don't have the education about it yet. So even if it's something that we could include even, I don't know, just talk to Susan about it in our health classes, you know, we talk about this in the younger grades, we talk about marijuana in the younger grades to, because I really believe that when kids, I mean, my kids, they don't go outside without sunscreen. It's a different world, but but because of the education, you know, I mean, they wouldn't dream of leaving without sunscreen and I, you know, because there's, because Pauline Carey has scared them so much, you know, that, and it's great, it's, it was the perfect thing, but I think we need something younger, you know, geared towards them in our curriculum, as well as the middle school even before, I mean, the.
Oh, absolutely.
It's, it it is one of the things that I think you can tell personally, it it really is bothersome because not only the effects of the the THC, but the the other carcinogens are, it's out of control.
Well, Dr. Potey said, you know, she said, a truck driver who's trying to quit smoking or whatever and doing vaping instead for whatever reason, does not want candy cane flavored, you know, vaping. It's marketed towards young kids.
Yeah, it's scary.
I mean, we're finding a lot of that about the marketing towards kids. You're starting to see the the flavored vodka everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that, that's.
Flavored spritzers.
Right, that, that's all marketed for kids. That's all for kids.
Right, and when the tobacco companies did that, they paid billions of dollars, you know, in judgments twenty years later, but the harm was done.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, Joe Camel was.
Right.
A couple of things, the, so you mentioned the start times, the start time legislation. I was paying attention to that. So are we formally look at secondary start times? There's a lot of research around that now.
There is, so that's, that's gonna be one of those committees that we're gonna look at, yeah.
All right, great. You know, Jerry, Jerry was talking about advocacy and it made me think about, you know, in in a past life in another school committee, we had a formal, a role for one school committee member to be a legislative liaison to kind of liaise with the the folks up on Beacon Hill to talk about those kind of budgeting things.
I had that in my former life, too.
Yeah, it's something we may wanna consider, you know, starting in the, in the, in the fall.
It's a good suggestion.
I think, you know, that if you have one point of contact, you know, we hear a lot from them just by way of, you know, emails or they get forwarded to you or letters to us, telling us how, what a great job they're doing advocating for us, but we don't have any formal process, you know. The Mass Association of School Committees does a lot of that on our behalf, but.
And it may assess on our behalf as well.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other thing is just, I, I'll say it again, I think that we're heading towards a, an oper, a need for an operational override. And so at the, the, the August meeting, if we could have the dates for the pin nights that are scheduled, I think it was pretty effective when we did a brief presentation about the budget at those pin nights. I mean, the parents aren't there to hear from us, but I know I kept mine under four minutes, so it didn't really make the night drag on. And so I think that it's a good way to to get people thinking. You know, tonight, we had a, an override vote and one thousand eighty-four people showed up to vote. And, you know, that's not a, that's a very, very small percentage of the electorate. By the way, it was nine oh four to one eighty is the unofficial tally. I have that on good authority from, a text message from Mike Markucci.
Did it pass?
I assume that's passed. He actually didn't say, but I assume it's passing, yeah. But I think, you know, it it's our job to start really getting the word out early if we think there's gonna be a need for an override. And maybe, you know, maybe there'll be a pot of gold somewhere or something will happen and we won't need an override next year. That'd be terrific. I would, I don't want my taxes to go up either. But I think we need to start the advocacy and the education on that early. And I know in the past, we didn't, you know, we don't go to the to the pin nights and start campaigning because that would be inappropriate, but we talk about, here's how we build our budget, here's the challenges we face this year.
Just staying aware.
Yeah, keep up, you know. And I think the year we did that, we did get more folks to come to the the public hearing and things like that, so. I think that's all I have.
So I I actually, this was the very first graduation that I've ever attended, and I'm not gonna go on about it, and we've spoken about it a lot today, but I do just have to say what really great, respectful kids we had, you know, and that, I was at the all-night grad party last night. And again, you know, they were just incredibly, I don't care so much about the well behaved, which they were, but engaged. There was not a single kid who was alone. There was not a kid who was sitting in the corner, like, there was a cohesive group. And I think that really speaks to the kids that we have here. It was really nice. And I also wanna give a shout out to the WeLog Fine Arts Night. I've been to many and this, and this would be my last one. And I have to say that I think that Mrs. Stover and Ms. Fagan just did a fantastic job, really wonderful, incredibly creative stuff that's meaningful to the kids. You know, I've, I've got three new songs on my i, on my iPhone because Adam came home and was like, I know the words to this one and I know the words to this one, and then can you get this one for me? Like, it really just lit them on fire. And I just have to say that that's.
It was awesome.
A great thing. It was really awesome. And thank you to the girls' basketball team for washing my car on Saturday because it desperately needed it. I'm not gonna do it unless somebody else does it for me, so. And all the other fundraising that our kids do for each other and for the district.
Well, I don't know if any of you guys went to the pops, but it was epic. It was really, you know, the end of the night with the two senior drummers, like with the drum off, and it was just so cool. It was really such a fantastic night. I'm still kinda reeling in it. It was so fun. And can you believe there are forty-five seniors that graduated from the, in the music program, which I think is amazing? That's a lot. And the middle schoolers, they walked away with a platinum and a couple of goals from the, the company, you know, the thing they did at Six Flags, which was great. And I'm gonna start crying. The all-night grad was so great. It's so lovely. Anyway, sorry. I know, you know, it's just, it's so symbolic of the, you know, the love and, I mean, it sounds so corny, but you, when you really think about it, it is so amazing. And parents who have had kids graduate still come back to help and decorate a whole room. You know, it's just.
And then come back in at five o'clock in the morning.
And clean up.
It's, it's almost like one of those Buddhist mandalas.
But you know, the, you know, Nancy Erwin, who runs the swap, she was there the entire night, you know, I, you know, so it's just, it's, it's beautiful that it's just not the, you know, the senior parents, but it's the entire community that it's just, it's, it's a beautiful sight, so.
Nancy's still a sub-senior.
Yes, that too.
So I have a story for the all-night graduation party. So I was volunteering, I I don't know how I got on the list. I was not happy about being on the list.
You did a great job, though.
Going every Wednesday. And I, I wasn't getting it. And so this is my little plug for the all-night graduation party. I did not get it and I was annoyed with pasting, but I pasted and I worked and I crawled around on my knees on the floor and cut out stuff because they said this was a good idea. So, but then when, you know, and I saw everyone else and I'd get distracted by someone doing stuff, does this look like a brick? Yeah, it looks like a brick, like, keep going. I didn't know what the hell was really happening. And then when I saw, even, you know, I did my setup, we go, I'm like, I still am not getting it, I'm not getting it. And then when you do the walkthrough and you see, I, you know, and this is my thing, I think it is amazing what this community does and when it all comes together and you see, and I think it is symbolic of, like, we're all little pieces in this puzzle here.[1569.94]